Here, here. There's only three minutes on here. One minute. Okay, so it's yours, will you this one? Okay. Good evening and welcome to the regular city council session for the city of Bella Vista. Would you please join us in the rise for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do the roll call the council. Councilmember Snow?
Here.
Will?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Fowler?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Lozniak?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We'll move on to citizens input. We should be okay times three minutes each, so we don't have to change anything. Mr. Orsah, Mark.
Mark Orsah, 5 Buckingham Drive. Just have a few questions tonight. On the STRs, I thought originally we were going to have the preliminaries done tonight, and I've been told that there's a special session now. Is that correct?
Yeah, there'll be a special session tomorrow.
So, but that's not...
At 1:30.
Okay.
And we'll be in here.
Okay, so the problem with 1:30 is people are working, first off. The second thing is, it's not, it's a work session, so it's not open to public comment.
Correct.
That's, that's where the sticking point is there. Is there anything that can be done, moved to 6 o'clock or 6:30, or was that a done deal?
It's a done deal, because we're also bringing in the gentleman from the Arkansas Department of Health who was here before.
Richard Murphy?
Yes.
Okay.
To guide us, and that was the only time that he was available.
Okay. I got another question. How many people on the city council board right now have, or family members have, short-term rentals? Can I have a start hand?
It's not a Q and A session.
No, I'm just asking a simple question. Is it yes or no?
The mayor's in charge of the meeting.
Are you willing to disclose that, or no?
As far as I know, nobody has.
Okay, alright. Also, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, so do you have a comment that you'd like to make? Because that's really what we're supposed to be doing at this point in time.
Yeah, that was my comment. 6:30, and you put it 1:30.
Okay.
You change it for an open forum to a closed forum. I got a problem with that. I don't think that's fair.
There'll be lots of time for discussion afterwards.
Okay. Well, in my discussion, you did the same thing back on July 25th. You pulled an audible, you changed up the meeting, and did the same thing here to make sure nobody could have public comment on it. Yeah, I do have a problem with that.
Okay, these are the rules.
Okay. It is what it is. I told you to wait till January. You guys want to push it through. There's a reason why you want to push it through.
Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Bradley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm Dan Bradley. I live at 22 4 Far Circle here in Bella Vista. Those that don't know that street, that's Loch Lomond, so I've been a renter, not a renter, sorry, I've had that on my mind in the last few, few weeks. I've been there since 2012. So, you know, I'm one of the fortunate or unfortunate individuals on the lake that has a sizable home next door to me that's being used currently as a renter. So, you know, I'm sure you've heard lots of comments about what can happen when you, when you live next to a lake and the issues that pop up and the concerns that you would have as a homeowner and a member of the Bella Vista POA and a member of the city. But I will tell you that unless you've done that and you've lived it for the last few years, you don't know really what all goes on. So, I can, I can share, you know, probably the biggest concern as a homeowner is the uncertainty of the unknown about what's coming in to your property. I mean, I know if people are renting and my wife's not here at night, but she would tell you, it dries her nuts. She just gets so nervous about who's coming in. You know, are they, are they quality people? Are they, you know, are there going to be risk factors? We don't know. So, that, that's an ongoing deal. I will tell you that our quality of life changes when there's people next door. Again, we live on the lake, we've had to deal with it all summer. We've got a beautiful home, we live, live right there, where, you know, our dream home. And without, without very, with very few exceptions, we can't go outside and enjoy our life, our little piece of heaven on Loch Lomond, without having to deal with, with, you know, noise, number of people down there, number of, you know, loud music being played, language. Fortunately, one of my sons and daughter-in-law and my grandkids here, it's a different, it's a different environment when they're, when they're with us and we have renters next door, because we have to, have to be cognizant of what's going on. I think, you know, again, until you, until you live it, you don't know it. The stated occupancy for that home next door to me is 12. It's a three-bedroom home, so you can do the math, that's way too many people. On top of that, they, they, you know, especially when we had the stay vacation issues where locals were coming, I mean, there was time, there was 12, 12, 15 cars parked, two aside in their driveway, two in the garage, and up at my house. I've had people, I take cones out when I know the renters are coming, put it on my property at the top, top of the street where that's my, that's my issue right there. They take, they take the cones off and park there anyway, so. Anyway, it sounded like my minutes. One, one thing I do want to share, one of the big companies here with, is Evolve, and I'd like to read this to you.
Oh, Dan, I'll tell you what.
Can I come back?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, if, if you can scan that and send it to me.
Okay.
Okay, and then I'll, I'll get it up to the council.
Perfect. I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Billy Beveridge?
Can I give my son my time to Dan, so we can read it? Hi, I'm Billy Beveridge, 37 Carr Gill Drive. I just want to have some talking points here I want to walk through. I'm not opposed to rentals. We first came here in 1985 using vacation rentals, and we checked in, we checked out, we, we evaded by the rules that were given to us and respectful to the neighborhood. Now homeowner, we're now a homeowner for 10 years in December on Loch Lomond, right across the coast from Dan. So, I, I witnessed these people down on his dock, down on their dock. I'll keep going, excuse me. So, we see another side of, of the effect of some renters on the lake and now our neighborhood. Some folks are fine, but we don't know who they are. Loud music, jazz, rock, rock and roll, hard rock, Latino, but not much country, you know, just loud. A lot of renters, they rent a boat, pontoon, 65 to 75% of them, they violate our no-wake zone, making us the bad guys. You know, we're yelling at them to slow down, and, you know, that don't, that ain't right for us to have to do that. We sit out there on our dock, trying to enjoy the peace and quiet, and here we are yelling, whistling, "Slow down." And some of them do, some of them, you know, give you a little language, give you a little backtalk. It's not just the renters, you know, the same issue with some of our, our locals, but a higher percent of the renters, they rent boats. And right now, it feels that us homeowners that pay our assessment fees, that keep our amenities up to date and for enjoyment, our amenities are disrespected by some, not all, but we all know about the one bad apple. Spoils, spoils the whole thing for everybody. With us homeowners having no leverage, but here again, to be the bad guys, calling the Lake Patrol hotline, Dan and I got it on our phone. We send them pictures, we send them videos, and, you know, their hands are tied, but they come out. They come, we, we give them big kudos. You know, we've done this, we went to the lake meetings and shared this, and, and when we call them, they come running, they're on the lake, so. But, you know, for, for what is, you know, but why do we do that? Is it a slap on the hand? You know, there's no consequence that, you know, we're aware of for the renters or the landlords. You know, let's not wait for someone to get hurt or worse. We need an ordinance, but even more, enforcement of it. Thank you.
Thank you. James Foster?
Thanks, gentlemen. James Foster, I'm 17 Isla Lane on Lake Brittany. So, first of all, thanks for the work you guys have done to ordinances already. We were here at the last working session. I appreciated the information on septics, as a person who probably didn't know a lot of that information. But that said, I noticed in all the ordinances that have been presented that there's a line in there that says, "In order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens, visitors, and general community, as well as protect the residential environment and property values, that rules must be set forth regulating the management and behavior conducted on a short-term lodging property." There's some key words in there as you walk through. Several of those are safety, welfare, residential environment, and behavior. What this comes down to is this quality of life issue. The problem and the concern I have with the ordinances that have been presented to date is they, they all leave out the human side of the equation. So, while we can regulate septics, parking, maybe the number of people in the facility at any time, it's not taken into account anywhere the effect that it has on the neighbors and the neighborhoods where these facilities exist. And I use facility, I actually should use the word business, because they aren't homes, they're businesses, and they need to be treated as such, and they need to be understood to be such. That house next to us has turned into an STR, and it is no longer a home, it is a business that operates next to us. It has definitely changed our quality of life, and that's really what this is about. So, I completely understand and applaud you for the, the items that are in the ordinance so far that you've written and presented. We have to consider some other things, and like I said, that's the human side. So, to do that, I think the regulations and the ordinance must include a limit on the number of STRs. It can very easily get out of hand. You gentlemen have the authorization and the opportunity to make that not be a concern. Also, a limit on the concentration of the STRs in certain area. The lakes and the golf courses are most at risk. Even given the conversation about the, the septics, the last place you'd want that to happen is near a lake, where we then have to deal with contamination of a lake. We don't want any contamination, but the lakes make it worse. One of the things not in the ordinance that needs to be in there is that the neighbors and the community need input on approval of the regulation, I'm sorry, of the permit, because like I said, you can, you can look at the mechanical pieces of the home or that residence or that, that building, but you're leaving out the effect it has on the people in the area. And also, that the neighbors and the people around should have some input on the, the revocation, in case there are additional issues that come up that are not part of the ordinance, those need to be considered. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Abby Foster?
Hey there. That was my better half. So, I've never talked about anything in just three minutes, so I'm going to let you have it here. So, here's what I want to talk to you about. There are four different things that I want to ask for, and I'm speaking on quality of life, and as my husband said, our quality of life has literally been very negatively impacted by having an STR next door to us. I want to ask that you, as elected leaders, as you, as you file through these ordinances and as you consider what you will or won't put into them, what I'm going to ask you to do is keep the neighbors and the residents of Bella Vista's interest, put them before the interests of the STR owners, most especially those who do not live, and I think it's right at about 50%, who do not even live in this, in Bella Vista. So, I'm asking you to put us first as our elected officials. Second thing I want to ask you for is an operating process. As you do this, it's one thing to put it on paper, and it's not even worth the paper you write it on if you can't enforce it. So, I'm going to ask you for an operating process that will get, provide a clear and very consistent enforcement of these ordinances going forward. Another thing, the third thing I want to ask you for is intentional regulations. I want regulations, yes, that include things like they have to have hotel insurance. I want a place to go if something happens, and I want to know that I'll be compensated for it. Inspections, fines, and owner liability. I want the restrictions to be such that it will absolutely repel anybody who considers investing here in STRs and is not intent on managing to the neighbors, the safety of the neighborhoods and the neighbors. The fourth thing I'm going to ask you for is that we have a voice in the approval process. Right now, the only thing I can do is call the police, and if a law hasn't been broken, but the behavior is completely invasive, like I'd love to have raised, laying hands, but guess what? That would be considered invasive. But an STR guest screaming at me to go into my house and leave her alone because she left a three-foot open fire for over 30 minutes before I called the STR owner, who didn't accept responsibility for it, but instead pointed the finger at me. Now, that did get, that did get you a police call because of the erratic behavior. But I'm telling you, there needs to be neighbor input in this process, and I mean in the reapproval process, and since they've already been operating, we probably could get some neighbor input in the actual first-time approval process. Again, it's all about quality of life. Now, every four to, toodle, two to four days, I go out and I assess whoever these strangers are, and I assess them with an eye towards not just my safety, that of my children, my grandchildren, but of the children in my neighborhood. All right? Thank you very much. I did it, didn't I? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian, Kevin?
Good evening. My thing on there, it doesn't say short-term rental, because we've had plenty of people speak on that, you guys have heard a lot, you're going to keep hearing more, at least another three months, see if it gets delayed some more after that. What I'm here to talk about is involved both from you guys and from everybody here, everybody not here, everybody in the city, everyone who visits the city, but it starts with you. We have a problem. It's not anyone specific on the council. It's been going on for years. Hopefully, it's going to stop soon. We have a, a government here that seems to care when people show up to meetings and wants people to show up on very few occasions. We don't livestream city council meetings. There's no reason that we don't. Kevin does a great job, but there's no reason the city should not be livestreaming city council meetings. Right now, your choice is to go on to a Facebook group and watch it, go to a private Facebook page and watch it, go to a private YouTube channel and watch it, wait for it to go on YouTube from the ladies and gentlemen recording, or maybe someone else is recording on, on their phone, maybe you're seeing it live, or you show up to the meeting. There's people that don't get off work until 6 o'clock, they can't show up to the work sessions. We have special sessions that are, the last time one was hosted after 5 o'clock, it was on Zoom in September of 2020. Everything else before that didn't go back that far. After that meeting, everything since then has been 4:30 or before. I'm lucky enough, I work until 3 o'clock. My wife works until 6:00, she can't come to the meetings, so she gets to hear from me every time I get home at, you know, 8 o'clock, and I just unload on her and tell her all this stuff. Part of that's because she can't watch it live. She gets home, she, right now, she could be watching live on the city website or on the city YouTube channel, but she doesn't. Now, it's her choice, everybody's choice to do that, but that is the first thing. We need to livestream our city council meetings. We also need to reach out. You guys have a duty to represent the people of Bella Vista. We don't need people on city council who are going to attack people who come to the city council meeting and speak, tell them that they should call and email first. It should be, "Thank you for showing up, and thank you for caring about our city." We shouldn't have people up here or anywhere in this room that are going to attack people for expressing their opinions. We should all be very grateful that this room luckily has some seats tonight, but we should be even more grateful when there's standing room on it. We need to make sure that everyone up here, everyone back there, everyone watching, wherever they're watching, knows that we have a city that cares about its people, cares about the people who come visit us, and you guys do a great job most of the time. But there is a whole lot coming to light with this short-term rental stuff that it's bringing out the worst in, in some stuff, bringing out the best in a whole lot of people. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Christian. Terry McConnell?
Hi, I'm Terry McConnell, and I live at 85 4 Far Drive, around the bend from a couple of the other people here from Loch Lomond. And, you know, I've experienced everything they've said. I've emailed you with some of my specific problems. I'm not going to go over all those again tonight. I really just wanted to address a couple of items, because I think y'all are on the right track with these ordinances. I've studied them. Two things that I want to address, one is occupancy. One of the proposals has no occupancy limits. You know, I think occupancy is probably the main thing that needs to be included in this ordinance. You know, our, our problems, we have a three-bedroom house next to us that advertises it sleeps 12 people, but it's not unusual to see 20 or more people over there. This causes problems, causes problems for us, and I think after listening to the guy from the health department talk about septic tanks, it's got to be a concern for the city. When we have a group of seven or eight people, a family or two, we seldom have a problem. When we have 20 people, we almost always have a problem. You know, they are, they, they get louder, they get crazier, they spill over our, our yard, and that, that, you know, we shouldn't have to deal with that. So, anyway, I just, I want the occupancy to be looked at real hard. I think it's really necessary. The other item in studying those proposals is, one of them has a limit of 750 permits. You know, I, I did the math, and it looks like there's about 13,000 houses in Bella Vista. You know, 750 of them, short-term rentals, that's one out of every 17 or 18 houses is short-term rental. That changes the nature of this city in a way I don't think it should be. You know, I don't know how the council goes about it, but I'd, I'd like to see the city working towards getting, you know, some hotels, motels, resort hotels even, you know, bring those people in, you know, get the revenue from them, put them in a business where they belong, don't be putting the businesses next door to the residences, is what is happening right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Philip Mason?
We'd just like to remind everyone here tonight that Bella Vista has been operating for a good long while, a good hundred years, and it started out as a short-term rental place, and we've been just fine without any regulation for a long, long, long time. And so, I'd just like everyone to know that it's become a lot more sophisticated. We have platforms, very sophisticated platforms that operate on an international basis, VRBO and also Airbnb, and they operate on a report system, which means hosts get to vet their, get to vet their guests, as well as the guests get to vet their hosts as well. So, it's, it's a report system, and what it does is it weeds out the bad actors, and it also allows for the best guests to come and the best hosts to survive, and that's the way the system works. And so, so if, if anything, you know, the, the short-term rental situation of Bella Vista is actually improving, it's actually getting better, because we have a better platform to operate off of, and there's actually really strict rules that Airbnb runs and also VRBO and other platforms. So, they're actually bringing in some of the very best people into our communities to spend money, and we should give those people the opportunity to spend money in our community, so we can raise revenue for Bella Vista and allow this city to grow and develop into something meaningful. And so, I would strongly encourage the city council to not crimp, not restrict short-term rentals in Bella Vista. I think that the people who are opposed to them are actually a very small minority, and the people that are in favor of them are actually a very large silent majority, I think is what we're seeing happening here in our community. Just the rapid growth that we're seeing in the short-term rental industry shows that it's very viable, and it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a savior for Bella Vista who desperately needs those short-term rental revenues coming in, that 4% that comes off of every stay. So, don't, don't do anything to crimp that. It'll, it really hurt Bella Vista if we do that. I would encourage the council to do what Bentonville has done and just kind of leave short-term rentals untouched, and don't go down the path that Fayetteville's gone down. Fayetteville's lost a lot of revenue because of the short-term rental deal where they've restricted them, they've capped them, they've put regulations on them, they've put fines on them and fees on them, and I've found in my experience that you will find that, that property owners, they'll take great care of their property, and they care more than anybody else about how their property is treated and who's in there, and they'll make sure that everything's taken well care of their property, better than the city council will, better than any law or ordinance will. And I think we just have to remember that. We have to remember that this is the United States of America, and we believe in free enterprise, and when free enterprise, when the market operates properly, you get the best of both worlds. It's self-regulating, and you don't, you don't need to have a bunch of regulation on top of things. It just stifles things and prevents our city from growing, so I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Shannon Davis?
Good evening, everybody. I am going to be discussing short-term rental rentals with you. I have a lot more points to cover than Miss Abby, so I'm going to talk a little fast, and I apologize, I will pronunciate the best I can. Let's talk about businesses, because this is what we're talking about, is businesses. These are not residential neighborhoods. You can look up Arkansas's actual tax law for what a residential property is. That is not a commercial property. These are two separate things that we're talking about. We're talking about businesses. Unrestricted businesses versus individual rights, which is more American? Let's say individual rights. An individual has a right to enjoy peace, to enjoy their land, and then to enjoy their neighborhood that they have bought into, which is this community. Now, I want to give you some solutions, because I'm not just going to come up here and be emotional and say all these things. I want to give this city council some things they can do, because Airbnbs are here. They are businesses, they need to be treated as such. We need to get insurances. They need to be treated as a business, which is a hotel. We get insurance equivalents. We need occupancy limits, just like any commercial building has. You don't have 5,000 people going into a hotel that's taxed 500, do you? Fire marshals would be all over that. would be all over that. We have zoning restrictions for a reason. We need to keep those in place, and if they do need to be changed, they need to be changed by neighborhood and not just individually. Let's talk about the parties on the lakes. Nuisance laws should be more swift and more strict when it comes to enjoyment of the peace. Let's talk about safety. A host, as mentioned earlier, gets to vet. What credentials do these hosts have? Where are their credentials to vet any guest? Are they trained in credibility techniques? Are they trained in lying? Are they FBI agents? No. That's a big deal to be able to credential, put credentials on someone. So, sales tax has been a big thing that's been talked about, huge thing. How many of these funds of sales tax are earmarked for anything that is being used? Let's talk about resources. Our resources are being depleted. Are there earmarked funds coming from these STRs to be put towards resource development? They're using lakes. They're fishing. Okay, that is depleting the stock. What plan is in place? There's not one. We need to think about earmarked funds from taxes on permits is one way, and just having taxes when you apply for the short-term rental. I propose, and this is just me commenting, there should be a reasonable number of permits with an application and a lot of, or a certain amount of drone, new drone every year. Drone, drone. Maybe I can speak. I think there should be penalties on the property. I'm done. I think there should be penalties. If enough penalties, your permit gets pulled, then you have to pay a fine to get it back. You have to go through the process again. Thank you.
My thanks to everyone who has spoken this evening. Appreciate it. It's not always easy to stand up in front of a crowd, and I'm glad you're here. Next item is council reply. Anyone? John?
I'd just like to thank everybody for showing up, giving us their opinions and also facts and their feelings and experiences on both sides of the issue. It really is very helpful to hear from the citizens and, and the owners and get their perspective. So, I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
A lot of, you know, we've got four proposals now, not just three. We don't have an ordinance built. We're still building. And about two-thirds of the comments here are things that are going to come up and probably get incorporated into the ordinance when we finally get it built. But, you know, some people think it's, it's not already there. We have four different proposals. We'll put them all out, one from column A, one from column B, take things in, put things out, and we will build one. We've got maybe a long way to go, maybe not. But most of the stuff you talked about today will be in there. Will be in there. So, just give us a shot, you know. And then, after we get something, you know, we have three readings after that. And we need to, if we get something built, we need to actually run it for the three readings so you people have time to comment, and then if something really needs to be fixed, we can fix it before we make it final. Okay?
I'd like to thank all of those who are here tonight relative to that issue, even though it's not on our agenda. We had it on the agenda in June, tabled it until October. And in the meantime, there has been a lot of interest by any number of folks in the city to bring it back because of complaints that we've heard tonight from those who have spoken, issues where a house next door is rented, and there's a lot of noise generated, a lot of other things. We do have nuisance ordinance that can be actuated, can be affected by our law enforcement group. So, we do have laws on the books currently that can address some of the complaints that we've heard tonight and other times. I think particularly one issue expressed is that the meeting tomorrow afternoon is a work session. What we're trying to do is to sift through four proposals, pick out what we think is the best of each of them, and move to a draft, at least of a final version perhaps, to consider. That may get amended too, going through three readings, which is three months of sessions by the council. I think there is merit in regulating the short-term rentals as a business. They are in residential neighborhoods, and it's not the same as renting a house for a year to a family, a long-term rental, because those people usually pretty well blend into the neighborhood. Many of them have children, so they go to school here while they're here. It's a different setting than someone who's coming in for two days, three days, or four days at a time. So, I think there's a consensus on the council that some form of regulation is warranted. And I want to thank you all for coming out and sharing your thoughts. You can email some of those thoughts, those of you who didn't get to speak fully tonight. Feel free to send the comments. Our emails are on our website for each of us. You can copy all of us, including the clerk and the mayor, and share your thoughts for us to consider. We've had probably 100 or so emails already on the subject, so thank you for those thoughts.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, just lastly, so I've said this before. I think probably most people at this point know that I was the probably initial, you know, driver of, I think, understanding that we needed to move forward with some type of short-term rental ordinance and regulations. Again, I mean for some of you that may not know, but I've said it before, I'm actually the chairperson for the Bella Vista Advertising Promotion Commission, Discover Bella Vista. And our operation, we market and brand Bella Vista, you know, for visitors who come and enjoy our city, visit us, you know, hopefully spend their money here. We're in competition with, you know, every other city in Northwest Arkansas and even a broader spectrum than that. But it came to my attention, I started receiving emails with issues about short-term rentals from residents of the city. And I was, you know, kind of, you know, raised, raised the situation that I thought might be potentially festering. I had a conversation with our CDS organization, which of course would be Doug Cap and the people that work for him. When I brought the subject up to him, he's like, "Oh, my gosh, we get, we get complaints every day." And then he said, you know, "In addition to those complaints, you know, we have homes that are advertising, you know, 10, 12, 14, 16 people occupancy, and we already know we have potential situation with our septic systems, et cetera." So, whenever those conversations began unfolding, my initial reasoning for rationale for doing this was not to harm the short-term rental market at all, but it was in fact to try to take some steps to get our arms around it and protect it, actually. I mean, that was my thoughts, because it's important to Bella Vista. I understand that. I recognize that. And I think a lot of the people, the residents of Bella Vista, recognize that as well. I don't know that most people really want to do away with or eliminate them, but we need to manage them to where they don't upset the, you know, the residential aspect, I mean, the neighborly aspect of our neighborhoods, because it's completely upsetting them. And I think for the city council meeting that I could not attend because I tested positive for COVID whenever the initial ordinance was proposed, the last gentleman that spoke, I think he spoke to the situation most eloquently, actually, and he's from Portland, Oregon, and Portland, Oregon is a city that's heavily inundated by short-term rentals. And he kind of turned around, he looked at the audience that night, which was pretty significant. He said, "Look, look, everyone," he goes, "we need to address this, and we need to address it now, because it's coming fast, it's coming furious, and it isn't going to stop. And what you're going to experience is it's going to completely change the dynamic of your community. You're not going to have neighborhoods anymore where people walk up and down the street and visit with each other. You're not going to know who your neighbors are, because they're not going to be your neighbors. They're going to be switching out every single weekend. You're not going to want to leave your garage doors open any longer, because you don't know who's walking up and down the street." And he went through a litany of things. And I think, you know, regardless of some of the other issues, some of the issues have been talked about, we need to think about the character of Bella Vista and what we want to make sure, you know, that we retain and protect. And I think short-term rentals is a part of that. But again, we've got to get our arms around it, and we have to make short-term rentals, if we can, blend in, you know, to the fabric of our city. And hopefully, you know, we'll be able to do that effectively. I have high hopes for that anyway. And actually, of the four proposals that are put forth, you know, the basic tenets of probably all four of them are all there with really just not a whole lot of differences or nuances. And I'm pretty hopeful that we're going to be able to come to an agreement and get a proposed ordinance that makes sense for everyone, you know, by the next city council meeting. So...
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Move on to the agenda. Next is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes that require your approval. The one is the July 25 regular meeting of council. Are there any errors or omissions? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Roll call. Councilmember Wozniak?
Eric, yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next set of minutes was a special meeting we had on August 9, where we made funds available to repair the PD after the lightning strike. I'm happy to tell you as a sidebar that all the contractors have now got orders in for parts. The downside is we're now going through the post-COVID of wait, wait, wait for parts. But Chief and his staff are managing some workarounds. It seemed to be fairly effective, not as good as having a tower that's always in place, but they are making it work. So, hopefully, we'll start seeing the parts come in, and we can start repairing the gates, the towers, and some of the electrical panels.
Remove that be approved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, roll call again. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Had a stain. I wasn't here.
Wilms?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, five with one abstentions.
Thank you. The next is the July financial report that Finance Director Hall issued to all of you. And folks, there's a copy on the middle table there, so help yourselves. We continue to have an extremely strong balance sheet, which is good. One of the reasons for that strength is I have purposely been watching the economy, and if, heaven forbid, we go into a deep recession, I want to make sure that we're able to keep all our employees on board so that you continue to get the service that you deserve, because frankly, a pothole doesn't care if it's a recession or not a recession. It's still got to be fixed. So, that's one of the reasons for the strong asset side. On the expense side, we continue to underrun the budget. Some of that is timing because streets and the paving. The contractor is coming back to continue the paving this week, and we still have a long stretch to pave on Highlands now that various culvert jobs and the widening of Rocky Del Hollow has been complete. But nevertheless, we continue to be in very good financial shape.
I entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So...
Second.
All right. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Excuse me, yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
The first is an ordinance amending section 109, excuse me, 109-75R1, Residential Single Family District of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to modify certain minimum setbacks from 10 feet to seven and a half feet and for other purposes, amending section 109-75R1, Residential Single Family District of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to modify certain minimum setbacks from 10 feet to seven and a half feet and for other purposes. That was the first reading. This came to us from the Planning Commission, and staff is asking that we move to third and final. Are there any comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion to suspend.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Flynn?
All right. Voting on suspending the rules. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you.
Mayor, that title is duplicated in the...
I thought it was.
Just the, you know, three and twice, just first part there.
This is the third and final reading of the ordinance amending section 109-75R1, Residential Single Family District of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to modify certain minimum side setbacks from 10 feet to seven and a half feet and for other purposes. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, this was discussed at the work session. I think Ms. Robinson explained it very well. I move that it be approved.
Thank you. Mr. Snow and Mr. Fowler.
All right. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next is an ordinance amending section 109-42, Variances of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to Remove Administrative Approval of Certain Minor Modifications to Reduce Side Backs, Side Setbacks Under Certain Conditions and For Other Purposes. This too also came from the Planning Commission and staff. Is requesting third and final. Is there any discussion?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Fowler and Mr. Flynn?
All right. Roll call. Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. Third and final. This is an ordinance amending section 109-42, Variances of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to Remove Administrative Approval of Certain Minor Modifications to Reduce Side Setbacks Under Certain Conditions and For Other Purposes. Is there any discussion at all?
Yes. One comment is, is that this section has been modified, was it earlier this year? Taylor?
It went live August 1st.
Oh, wait.
It went live August 1st.
It came into law August 1st.
Oh, the first of the other revision. And what that did is eliminated item A. If you go on our website and look at our code, item A has already been adjusted. So, if you read the code and you look at it as it's written in this request for amendment, it might suggest that a improper section is being eliminated, untrue because of the condition of the code today. So, just wanted to clarify. I got caught up in that until it brought it to my attention.
Well, you may be right. Well, this has been previously changed, because I'm pretty sure that when this was drafted, it was based off the code that existed prior to its amendment.
If you're basing it on the one that's on our website, it's wrong, because the item A was deleted off the website.
Taylor, I hope you need to come up.
It's based off of the correct one. Megan and I...
Yeah, it's correct. It's just that our website has not reflected the current code.
Yeah. So, this is what it is currently, and that's what we base it off of. We did not...
As it is currently amended.
Amended. We did not base it off the new code.
Okay, all right. Never mind.
Look at the code that's on the website. It appears to be wrong, and that caught me off guard. So, Taylor corrected me. Thank you.
So, we were correct all along, of course. Please do receive.
It was right all...
Any further discussion?
Now, you know what? I'd just like to say one thing. We, you know, CDS, and I've made comments just in the recent past, and I think that's just further proof. We have excellent personnel, and they know what they're doing. They're all over it, and I really have high respect and high regard for Doug and his department with Taylor and Megan. And of course, it was Derek who sadly moved on. I know you'll find another, you know, sufficient replacement for sure, probably someone else that... hopefully exceeds our expectations as well. But these people do a tremendous job. They really know what they're doing.
Okay, anybody else? Entertain a motion? Mr. Williams, second anyone?
Second.
And Mr. Steve, Burke?
Roll call, vote again. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
Thank you. The third piece of business and last piece of business is approving the mayor's appointment of JV Portillo to the Bella Vista Arts Council to fill an unexpired term ending April the 22nd, 2024, resulting from the resignation of Shelley Kerr. As I mentioned at the work session, unfortunately, Shelley, who is a planner with the City of Bentonville, but she lives here in Bella Vista, has seen a marked increase in her workload and advised Demra Tipton, who's here tonight as the president of the Arts Council, that she just could not attend all the meetings and give it all that she wanted to. And as a result, she tendered her resignation, and JV stood up and spoke with Demra and agreed to put her name forward for the remainder of the term. Are there any questions at all? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
No move.
Second.
Mr. Flynn and Mr. Wozniak?
All right. Roll call, vote again. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
Thank you. Moving on to meetings and announcements, there will be a special work session on short-term rentals at 1:30 in the afternoon tomorrow. On Tuesday, August 30th, at the Bella Vista courtroom, that's here. And the next City Council work session will be Monday, September 19th at 5:30 here in the court. And the next regular meeting of City Council will be Monday, the 26th at 6:30 here in the court. The Planning Commission work session will be September the 1st at 4:30 at the Bella Vista courtroom. And the Planning Commission regular meeting will be September 12th at 4:30 here in the court. And the Board of Construction Appeals will be September the 13th if needed. On behalf of council, thank you for coming out this evening, and I wish you and your families a safe and happy Labor Day. Good night.